Good evening. I hereby call to order this regular meeting of the Board of Education of the Willmet Public School District 39 for Monday, June 27, 2016. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Here.
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 Principal Kelly Jackson and Assistant Principal Eric Reese will introduce eighth-grade Tri-ship and Platter winners to lead the Pledge of Allegiance tonight. Welcome.
What up, guys? Every year at eighth-grade graduation, we honor students with our Tri-ship Award. The Tri-ship Award stands for Scholarship, Citizenship, and Fellowship. And I have four of our Tri-ship winners here tonight. They actually have shown their dedication to District 39 by coming back on their summer break after graduation. So, we're really privileged to have them here. I'll have them introduce themselves quickly.
Reece Decker.
Alina Papatia.
Arjun Khora.
Catherine Figura.
All right. Please rise for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Enjoy your summer vacation. Now may I seek a motion to approve the minutes of the May 23, 2016, regular and executive session meetings and the executive session minutes of the June 6, 2016 Strategy Committee meeting.
So moved.
May I have a second?
Second.
Great. The motions having been made and seconded, are there any comments, errors, or omissions to the minutes? Okay, seeing none. All of those in favor of approving the minutes as submitted, please indicate by saying yea.
Yea.
Great. The motion carries by general consent. Now, this brings us to the first opportunity for audience members to address the board. Would anybody like to address the board at this time? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on with our agenda. The first, our Board Committee reports. The Strategy Committee, Ms. Levine.
The Strategy Committee met for the first time on June 6 and discussed a few items. First of all, the committee's purpose. And the board discussed and agreed that the Strategy Meetings are meant to be a forum to prioritize vet and add ideas to the administration's plan for the year. They set a meeting schedule to coincide, first off, in June to review the Committee Review Committee report, the one that has been presented to the board in May, and that's what was done in this meeting. In September, they will meet again prior to the fiscal year planning presentation to the board, and in January, in advance of February plan updates that the administration provides to the board. There's also the intent to have a meeting in April, although that maybe is TBD depending on topics to address. The committee discussed the sustainability goals that the district presented, discussing performance contracting, as well as the part-time coordinator roles that are on the docket for the committee. And then reviewed, as I said, the annual strategic plan and projects associated with it. And the next meeting will be in September with a date still to be determined, I believe.
September 18. Monday, September 18.
Great. Okay, thank you very much. Facility Development, Ms. Alcantara.
Yes. The Facilities Development Committee met here at the MEC on June 16 at 8:00 a.m. We received a report on replacement of a water meter at the MEC, which was being followed up by retesting of water. We've noted previously all water testing in the district showed no detectable levels of lead in our school buildings. However, at the MEC, there were very low levels of lead detected at a lower level than that acceptable for bottled water. Regardless, we determined that an old water meter was the likely cause of those low levels, and now that replacement has taken place, we expect that the previously detected levels will be eliminated. We received a brief report confirming the unscheduled initiation of work at Harper and the Junior High on the Learning Commons at both of those buildings. We received a report on a visit by Ingersoll Rand to begin the process of building review and assessment to determine if we have any projects that might be suitable for potential performance contracting. We'll receive a report in the fall. Regarding technology, Tony Demonti reported that the end of work is nearing for both cabling and engineering. All access points for cabling are connected and running. Power has been set up in all closets to meet demands of applicable units. On the engineering side, active directory work was completed and was in the testing phase. Approvals regarding the contractor's work is contingent on fall implementation with full capacity of students in the buildings, which will be the real test. And finally, we discussed a new scheduling model for our Facilities and Finance Committee meetings, namely, holding the meetings on the same day in the morning each month so that both committee meetings run back-to-back. The committees will convene monthly, starting at 8:00 a.m., in this scheduling format with the first such committee meeting scheduled for September 12.
That's it? Great. Thank you very much. Insurance Advisory, Ms. Kearney.
Thank you. Insurance Advisory has not met since the last board meeting, so there's no update. The next insurance meeting's going to be October 17 at 4:00 o'clock here.
Great. Thank you very much. The next is the Community Review Committee, the CRC. I'll have that one. We met on Monday, June 6 here at the MEC. This was a joint meeting of the outgoing and incoming CRC members. New officers were elected, and the 2015-2016 CRC report was reviewed for the incoming new members of the CRC. Additionally, the Board of Education members attended this meeting to discuss topic ideas for the upcoming year. Several options were suggested by various CRC members, including wellness, digital and financial literacy, student growth, diversity and inclusion, and online learning. CRC members, as well as Dr. Lechner and BOE members, began a discussion of these options. No decisions were made, and the CRC will continue this conversation at their next meeting, which is July 11 at 7:00 p.m. here at the MEC. The next report is the Educational Foundation, Mr. Flanagan.
The Board of the Educational Foundation had its final meeting of the school year on May 25. They approved the 2016-17 budget, and approximately a third of the trustees roll off the board each year, and the board elected a slate of new trustees for the coming year. Finally, outgoing President Tracy Peacock was thanked for her leadership, and Tracy handed the gavel to Margie Karabas, who is the incoming president. To my knowledge, the board has not yet set a date for the first meeting of the 2016-2017 school year.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Flanagan. The WCSCA, Ms. Kearney.
Thank you again. WCSCA, Wixi, the Willmet Community Special Education Association, contract that we share with Avoca, did not meet since the last board meeting. Next meeting will be November 14 at 4:00 o'clock here at the MAC.
Okay. Thank you very much. And School Finance, finally, Mr. Flanagan.
School Finance Committee did not have a meeting in June. We will meet on August 29 at 8:00 a.m. here at the McCallion Center.
Great. Okay. And Legislative Update, Ms. Alcantara.
So, conversations around the K-12 education budget in Illinois have been fluid since our last meeting in May, with multiple bills and funding options being proposed for consideration. Ultimately, no proposals were successful and being advanced by the May 31 legislative deadline. And because the legislature has surpassed that statutory May 31 deadline, all legislation advanced from this point on in 2016 will now require a 3/5 supermajority vote in both chambers for passage. Discussions on changing the school funding formula will likely continue through the summer. A bipartisan working group continues to meet regularly in an effort to finalize a FY17 K-12 budget prior to July 1. The issue remains the overall additional revenue that will be put into the educational system. Negotiations are currently focused on achieving a compromised addition to K-12 education defined between the governor's FY17 introduction of $55 million in new funding for general state aid and the $700 million approved in both chambers. It's unclear how a possible six-month stopgap budget for human services and higher education might be tied to a likely K-12 fund year spending plan. Many social service providers have not been paid over the last year, so a rumored six-month human services and higher education stopgap would maintain necessary services through the end of 2016, which would then get the state to early January when only a simple 50% plus-one majority vote is required to pass legislation. Illinois lawmakers are scheduled to return to Springfield on Wednesday of this week, is my understanding, with K-12 education being their primary focus. Indications point to lawmakers taking action on a clean K-12 budget proposal for FY17. Some anticipate that language will be attached to a bill in order to extend the current funding formula for one year. The legislation expected will mirror language previously approved by the House, and that would hold all districts harmless at their FY16 funding level and add an additional $700 million equity grant that would be distributed based on districts per pupil low-income count. So, we shall see. We wait by July 1. That's just a few days. We'll see.
Doesn't give them much time. Anyway, thank you very much. Our first informational item tonight is written communications. The board received a written communication from Danica A. Link regarding teenage heroin addiction and sexual exploitation awareness. Now let us move on to administrative announcements. Dr. Lechner.
Yes, I'd like to open our announcements this evening by pointing out the new District 39 logo right behind me here. This new logo is part of a branding process that gave District 39 a new look, as well as a new website, which was launched earlier this month. Summer enrichment, our programs are off to a great start at Ramona and the Willmet Junior High School. Everything is going smoothly. The board can expect a full report at its September meeting. Eighth-grade graduation, once again, we had a successful graduation at Nutria High School. The space was able to accommodate our largest class of 470 students, who all crossed the stage. And I had an opportunity to speak to students about the challenges in our world today and that we need to celebrate differences. District 39 takes diversity seriously. We hope that the CRC, or I hope the CRC, will take this topic on for next year, and right now, we're planning a forum for parents to discuss this important topic in the fall. Enrollment update, as we do each year, we increase sections as we get move-ins moving into our schools. So far, we've added a fifth section of first grade at both McKenzie and Central, and then after that, then, at this time, only there's a kindergarten at Ramona that's approaching the limit. Otherwise, all the sections look pretty good. Administrators' contractual salary increases. Each June, we set the administrator salaries for the upcoming school year. For fiscal year '17, recommended salaries are CPI plus 0.8 percent. This means an aggregate increase for administration pay is 1.6 percent. July Board Meeting, tonight, we're able to get it all in, so we can officially cancel the July Board Meeting. And the next board meeting would be the August 29, which is the fifth Monday in August. Next, the Residential Property Tax Assessment Appeal. The district, in partnership with all of Nutria Township, will intervene before the Property Tax Appeal Board for residential property located at 15 Linden Avenue. Finally, we received two FOIA requests this month. Roy F. McCambell requesting invoices for legal services from January 1, 2014 through May 31, 2016. And Gabriella Larchella of Smart Procedure requesting any and all purchasing records from March 9, 2016 to present.
Great. Thank you very much. Our next information items are about the CRC, the Community Review Committee. Dr. Lechner.
Yeah, there are two items. One is Member-at-Large, and then CRC is recommending Beth Alpert and Andy Schaefer for approval as members at large. The other one is the revision in the bylaws. They revised their purpose, and this was discussed at the last CRC meeting, and they want the purpose to be more concise and better define the purposes of the CRC. Both of these require your approval as a board, and they're part of the consent agenda.
Great. Thank you very much. Strategic Plan Updates. The first is the review of the 2015-16 District 39 Connected Strategic Plan.
Yes, this report provides you an update of our strategic plan. Outcomes and measures are provided within the body of the report, followed by appendices that detail action steps for each goal area. Melanie Horowitz has this report, and as she approaches the podium, I'd like to let the world know, this is her last meeting and her last board report for District 39. She moves into retirement at the end of this week. Melanie, I want to thank you for all of your many years of service and dedication to District 39, and she didn't pause for a second. So, thank you.
Thank you very much, Dr. Lechner. I'm joined up here this evening by our administrative team, because this is certainly a collaboration that we all participate in. Are we able to bring up? I do it. Okay, here we go. So, this presentation will review highlights of our 2015-16 Connected Strategic Plan. The full board report, as Dr. Lechner mentioned, is found in your packets, and it includes all of the measures, outcomes, and deliverables. As the board is aware, this plan and the report are a collaborative effort of our entire administrative team, and although I'm representing the highlights, the full team will be available to address your questions and concerns at the conclusion. This didn't work the way I wanted it to. It was supposed to feed in, so I apologize that you have to sort of read through each one altogether, but I'll do it section by section. Our May parent survey yielded almost 700 parent responses about our communication about assessments in the district. Eighty-eight percent of those respondents to our parent survey indicated that district communication about assessments were effective. We always solicit comments, though, in our surveys, and parent feedback did have some consistent themes, suggesting that information about specific assessment dates and times is best provided through the classroom teacher rather than coming from the district as a general-wide school district information piece, as we've typically done it. More information is also desired regarding the ways the district is using our assessment data, with further clarification about the distinction of the uses of Park and Performance Series. And finally, it will probably come as no surprise to you that parents have some concerns about the amount of testing that's currently going on in schools. Our second section there applies to Mandarin, and we found that 89% of our eighth graders going into freshman year placed in Mandarin II or next, and we believe that's an indicator of the success of our Mandarin program, so this is our first cohort going on to Nutria. As far as Performance Series goes, you will be learning more in the next report from my successor, Katie Lee, about the new model that was developed this year, which is designed to address both achievement and growth. And then, the next bullet, as mandated by the state, we completed the second administration of Park this spring in just one testing window rather than two, which we feel was an improvement. Also, the new science assessment was successfully administered in grades five and eight this past May, and we did do that by pencil and paper rather than online. Additionally, in terms of our science alignment with the next-generation science standards, we've completed the first two phases of this process, and we'll complete the final phase with grades K through four next summer. Changes to date have been very minor. And then finally, as part of our annual business, we will be phasing the implementation of our revised writing curriculum next year and reading then in 17-18. We are continuing with our reviews of world language and library and technology next For our goals regarding sustainable practices, as the board is aware, world architects and engineers completed a sustainability audit for us this past year. Next year's strategic plan will include action steps, measures, and outcomes that address those recommendations. One measure in our current plan addresses school composting efforts. We saw significant decreases in the amount of school lunch waste that would typically go to landfill by, we saw a 33% reduction in our school composting efforts, so we thought that was very, very successful. Teachers also formalized a definition of environmental literacy by adopting the definition that's promoted by the North American Association for Environmental Education, and which is supported by the National Science Foundation and the Council for Social Studies. And that definition is, "An environmentally literate person is someone who, both individually and together with others, makes informed decisions concerning the environment, is willing to act on these decisions to improve the well-being of other individuals, societies, and the global environment, and participates in civic life." This definition will also be promoted through the tasks of the new curriculum coordinator, who has responsibilities for sustainability. And then your full report highlights many of the school-based activities and plans for increasing garden usage, and the next slide illustrates some of our garden and outdoor ed activities toward that. So, here we have Outdoor Ed reducing ord, which is the waste that would go to landfill. There's a game that we play at Outdoor Ed that addresses sort of the food chain with carnivores and omnivores. Then a fall harvest at one of the schools. We've now got some raised plant beds at some of our schools. Some of our classes in Spanish are outside for a novel study. There was a birthday piñata celebration in Spanish class. And finally, a novel study in literature circles at one of our schools. For our technology infusion and infrastructure goal, Learning Commons usage at Central School was increased by 28% over the traditional use of library and technology lab spaces. One focus for our tech department this year was tracking technology support requests and determining levels of satisfaction with tech support. To assess this, a ticket system was established, with 32% of staff responding to a satisfaction survey. Of these responses, 95% of the staff indicated that work was completed satisfactorily. The HMS teachers are receiving training to support the fifth-grade one-to-one iPad rollout this summer, and the board received a December board report regarding the multi-year plan established for the replacement of key infrastructure technology requirements. Further, an electronic sharing place has been established for teachers to post Learning Commons lessons that are aligned to our curricular goals. This will be an ongoing practice, as these spaces are developed in other buildings and are accessible to all staff and students. The following slide highlights some of the learning that occurred in Central's new Learning Lot of Maker Space-type of activities. A major focus of this year's plan was based on the CRC report and addressed the non-cognitive skills. With a focus on this year's strategic plan on cultivating growth-minded, resilient students, one section of this year's plan addressed development of non-cognitive skills. An important tool toward developing these skills is the application of the eight mathematical practices. With focused instruction, our junior high students surpassed our expectations during the first three quarters of the year when the data was collected. Your full board report provides some examples of the way students embrace these practices in problem-solving. Then, as the board is aware, scheduling options were developed and considered, with full board reports on the topic in November, January, and February. These options will be explored further during the next school year. As per the recommendations from the 2014-15 CRC report, homework practices were examined by grade level and department meetings during the current school year. Particularly in grades five through eight, increased communication about expectations will be provided to parents with suggestions for how parents can best assist their students. Further, improved communication between core and non-core teachers is planned to prevent those overlapping quizzes and tests and projects that sometimes are problematic for our students. As we continue to address best practices for coping with academic stressors and anxiety, a deeper dive looked at chronic absenteeism due specifically to school refusal and/or anxiety. Fall attendance data revealed 155 students district-wide in this category, accounting for 4% of our total school population. More concerning is the trend data that shows early patterns of absenteeism are predictors of future chronic absenteeism. Our March Institute Day featured sessions dedicated to strategies for supporting these students. Further, our building leaders are collaborating with student services to develop monitoring procedures and interventions for these situations. Our strategic plan for 2016-17, which we worked on last week, will address causes of this kind of absenteeism and related interventions designed to improve these habits. As the board is aware, from the May board report, the district is in compliance with requirements of the Performance Evaluation Reform Act, known as PERA. Our PERA Joint Committee, composed of four teachers and four administrators, met throughout the current school year with the goal of selecting a student-growth model and incorporating results into a summative teacher evaluation process in accordance with the legal requirements. The student-learning objectives process will be implemented during the 2016-17 school year, and the committee will reconvene during the year to evaluate the current plan and to determine plans for 2017-18. And then for our five-through-eight grade-level model, teachers in grade five have been strongly encouraged to secure middle-school endorsements by the 2017-18 school year. Multiple subject endorsements provide greater teaming flexibility in the departmentalized middle-school approach that now extends to our fifth grade. To date, 80% of grade-five teachers have acquired this middle-school endorsement, and further, our expectation by 2017-18 is that 50% of these will be endorsed in math. We're about halfway there with one more school year for this goal to be met. Grade five will use a new departmentalized structure that is more closely aligned with grade six. This will improve consistency in transitions to middle-school and will improve collaboration and instruction, and also provide an ELA learning block. And then for our facilities development, as we look at our current, as we considered current expansion for kindergarten, it was determined that this cannot really be considered at this time due to inconsistent space throughout the district. Our facilities development does include further conversions of existing library and technology labs into Learning Commons spaces, with plans to complete this project throughout the district by summer of 2018. And finally, we are completing year two of our life safety projects for boilers and roofs, I have the wrong word here, at boilers and roofs this summer, with the projected completion of the three-year plan next summer. And now, our administrative team, okay, this was not, this was not, I think we brought up the wrong one. Okay, it should say questions and comments. So, we are ready for your questions and comments.
Great.
And the whole team is here.
Any, our board members have any questions or comments? Cindy?
So, thank you for the report. My questions are, actually, they're all in the academic stress and absence report.
Sure.
And there's a lot of percentages in here, so if my question is in here, you can just tell me. But, so the 29%, or the 4% of the total school population, or the 29% of those who have been absent chronically, how does that compare to other, I mean, is there a benchmark for this? It felt high to me, but I don't know.
That's a really good question. I'm not aware of that, but maybe Dr. Thrasher is.
This was actually to establish our benchmark. A part of it is, we do track attendance and have for the past years, but this is the first year where we've been looking at reasons behind it, so that is our benchmark. But what we have seen, and I believe it's in your report, is that an increase for the past three years, and that's why, again, it's something we need to concentrate on.
I think she was asking about, is there any other state average or township, any benchmarks outside of this?
Comparative, comparative, thank you, comparative benchmarks.
No, we don't have any.
Or what we're looking for, okay. And then, in terms of where, does this skew to the older grade? I mean, is it more prevalent as the kids get older? I know that the percentage of those who are absent chronically is higher, but the number, this 155, is it primarily in the older grades, or is it?
Well, it's all throughout, but as this Well, it's all throughout, but as the students get older, then we're seeing the N is larger at each grade.
Okay, that's what I mean, okay, okay. And do we know, or is this part of next year's plan, kind of the why, whether it's schoolwork, teacher issues, peer issues?
That is next year's, next year's work.
And I guess that was my question, that is part of the 2016-17 plan, we'll see a plan about this ongoing. Okay, thank you, thank you.
Great, okay. Tracy?
I'll start with that question, or that topic. I have the same question, but I just want to ask a little more specifically. Without being specific, what is the feedback that you're hearing from parents or children of why they don't want to come to school at this point? Or why they're late, or is, can you give me examples of that?
There's a variety of reasons, you know. Some of it is just sleep habits, some of it is struggles at home in the morning as far as the tardies and getting children out the door. Some of it is concern with schoolwork, social reasons, there's a lot of reasons, not one specific reason.
I think that the, what we're going to be focusing on for next year is developing a targeted, specific plan that if you miss X number of days, then there's going to be an intervention. If you miss X number of more days, there'll be a stronger intervention. And then third, by the time we get to a certain level, we'll know what the source of the problem is. And then we're going to have a series of supports and interventions at work based on what's causing the problem.
I understand that and appreciate that, and I really think it's great, but the reason I'm asking that is, we talked about interventions and getting a strategy in place and stuff, but it's difficult to intervene and get a strategy in place when you don't know what the feedback has been from parents or children. And I'm sure it's a gamut of reasons.
Yeah, we don't want to get into next year's plan, but there are three broad areas in which we're going to be identifying based on feedback that we've had.
Okay.
So the answer is we do.
And I'm asking this overtly because I too have heard just from the community some things involving children leaving the district, et cetera, and I'm really glad we're looking at it. So, thank you. My second, my other question was, oh, just about the science, the next generation test, or is that what it's called?
Sure.
Next gen. I feel like that's something, that's something else that's called that, too. Anyway, you said that we use pencil and paper the old-fashioned way. Was that a choice, or was that because we weren't?
So, the state was very, very, let me add another couple of varies in there, very delinquent in getting the platform appropriate for districts that use iPads and Macs. And so, it got to a point where we just felt for ease of implementation, at least during this first year, we had to do the paper and pencil version, and it went very successfully. It was done in a class period, and we'll see next year if they're able to get information to us.
Would we consider continuing?
We might consider if that's an option, we'll have to see if the state offers that as an option.
Okay.
But I want to add that it was a last-minute change on the part of the state, literally the last minute.
Oh, I get, I totally didn't think we chose paper and pencil because it was available, but it's a science test, and sometimes paper and pencil does better, is what I'm going with that.
Yeah.
So, thank you.
Sure.
Other board members, questions? Okay, thank you all.
Thank you.
Very much the team, we're impressed.
Thank you all.
Thank you. Okay, so our next strategic plan update is evolving performance series student growth model.
Yes, this report updates the board on the emerging model for analyzing student growth using performance series data in math and reading. This new approach helps District 39 distinguish between student performance or attainment versus student growth or gain to guide instructional decisions. The next steps will be included in the 2016-17 strategic plan and will be shared next fall. Katie Lee has this report.
Good evening. This report updates the board on the emerging model for analyzing student growth over time. Student growth is defined by a change or difference in student achievement between two points of time. The difference between student growth and achievement can be best explained using a high jump analogy. The goal of an achievement test is to ask a high jumper, can you jump over this bar? And the bar is defined by an established benchmark and or standard set for the student. But on the other hand, the goal of student growth is to ask a high jumper, can you continue to jump higher from wherever you started? In this case, the bar is defined and redefined by the student. In addition, student growth is also impacted by non-cognitive factors such as mindsets, behaviors, self-regulation, and time management. After calculating the difference between fall and spring achievement scale scores, a question remained, how much growth can be expected by students? First, we learned that performance series gains reports only compared a student's progress in relation to the current pool of students. Then, in order to increase the comparison pool, a data consultant from performance series tried to find comparison groups for us. Due to limited demographic information, this avenue did not produce the type of data we needed. So we asked Phil Overlino to use our local data to calculate local expected growth ranges for math and reading. Using 50-point bins of scale scores, Mr. Overlino used the results of the analysis to calculate local expected growth ranges for math and reading for each grade level. These gains ranges may be used to evaluate current student's growth level in terms of local expected gains. For example, a sixth-grade student's fall math score being 27, 25 has an expected growth range of 46 to 166 points. Therefore, if the student's spring math scale score increases by at least 46 points, the student meets the gains expectation. If the score increases beyond the 166 points, the student has grown above the gains expectation. The expected gains ranges will be renormed every three years using five years of data. Reading and math will be renormed in 2018, 2019, and 2019, 2020, respectively. And this schedule follows the district's existing renorming cycle for performance series data. So each year, District 39 educators use both qualitative and quantitative data to reflect on the quality of curricula, effectiveness of instructional delivery models, and progress of students from grades K through eight. However, in the process of developing a student growth model, we have gained a different perspective on growth that provides new information to our students' profiles. Performance series growth data and expected gains ranges will assist in enhancing the collaborative professional discussions and instructional planning sessions that occur regularly throughout the year. Since growth is measured from fall to spring, 2015-2016 student information will be shared in the fall of 2016. Administrators and teachers will have access to prior year's expected growth levels so that it will serve as a baseline for monitoring growth over the span of 2016-17. In addition, two formal data discussions per year will follow the assessment windows. Teachers may use questions to guide their reflections prior to developing a plan to differentiate instruction in order to meet the needs of their students. For example, the guiding questions may include but are not limited to the following. How many students fall in the above meets and below expected growth levels? Within each growth level, which student's achievement proficiency level falls within the following percentiles? Does the average standard error of measurement impact whether the student would have met the expected growth? Another was, what does the cross-section between proficiency levels and expected growth levels imply? Do any students receive instructional interventions is defined by individual education plans, 504 plans, English language learner services, or response to intervention services? Which students fall within typical grade level progress? Are there high-achieving students who have not demonstrated growth? And how can we differentiate content and process to spark growth for all students? Are the students demonstrating growth on curriculum-based assessments? Does classroom performance support the need for intervention? What cognitive factors should be considered when assessing contributing factors towards student growth? And which teacher team member will contribute to the implementation of the instructional plan if necessary? So District 39 is in the process of creating the growth, the student growth math and reading data tables for each grade level using 2015-2016 performance series data, but within the context of grade six math and grade two reading, we can share some sample results. These charts contain data that reflects the cross-section of student achievement level and below-growth level. This information will help identify students who have not grown within the expected range and therefore increase the awareness among teachers. So the proposed student growth model will be piloted starting fall 2016 through spring 2017. And with the goal to improve growth for all students, the district is including the student growth model in the 2016-2017 district strategic plan. If you have any questions, I'm happy to answer.
Board members, do you have any questions? Kimberly.
Okay. So, I want to make sure, as I'm posing my questions, that I understand what I'm looking at. So, taking, for example, the grade six data that's presented in the report on page seven, Appendix B. So these are, one, these, this chart represents each row, one student. Basically, tell me if I'm correct here, what I'm seeing is
Yes.
A total of, wait, am I still looking? Yeah. So we have a total of 122 students?
Yes.
Who are not reaching what we would want to see as the expected, or what we expect to see as the expected growth range.
Yes.
Right?
Yes.
Seems alarmingly high to me, because that seems like more than a quarter of the students approximately, right? We're not seeing expected growth levels.
Right, so.
At least on this measure.
Absolutely.
Which makes me question, is there something wrong with the measure? Is there something, you know?
I think there are some limitations to the measure, but one of the things that I'd like to point out is the standard error of measure for the assessment. So if you look at, for example, student number five going across, there were, there was a, you know, a zero gain between the 48. And then, when you look at the difference between whether they would meet or not with the standard average, standard error of measurement at 55, that's a plus or minus 55. So that student potentially could have, within the realm of the assessment, met that gains range. We also have students who have, like, the difference is zero, so for example, student number eight is 45. At the 25th range, it would have been 45 points as well, so it would be a zero difference toward being met. So it's just something to keep in mind. We feel that this is all information that we need to look at, even to that granular level, so that we understand, okay, what is the student's profile, and then bring in other factors that we could consider.
So if we were going to add another highlighted cell, for example? If we were going to highlight in column three, which is the gain, if we were going to highlight only those cells for students who are not within the standard error of measure, for example, and we're going to focus on those, I guess I'm wondering what our approach is? Is our approach to, first of all, focusing on the students highlighted in red and yellow up through student 27, 25%? What is, what is our approach to those students, I guess?
Oh, okay, thank you. I was, clearly I wasn't clear in my description. We would consider all of them, because one of the things that we would want to keep in mind is identifying who our students are. So, for example, what I haven't had, to be honest with you, time to do is the cross-section of the 10%, 25% to see, you know, which of those students are we already providing interventions for? And if we're providing interventions for them, how could we improve even in those areas? But then, we've got the 90 and above 90, and we are seeing patterns of non-growth there for some of the students, so we want to investigate further into what we can do for them as well, including the mid-range of students.
So would you expect for the students who were represented in the, within the 25th percentile of proficiency level, would you expect that those students are already receiving some kind of services or assistance, or not necessarily?
Well, that's our thinking at this point, but until I do that cross-section of data, I wouldn't be able to tell you, like, right now.
Sure.
But I definitely believe that.
Mostly yes, but mostly the answer to your question is yes.
And if they are, well, and so the idea would be to, obviously, this could be an anomaly, it could be a bad test day, whatever.
Absolutely.
But particularly for the students who are showing up in the 10 to 20, 10 and 25th percentile who are certainly not making expected gains, if they're not already receiving services, it would seem like we would expect to have some kind of intervention, correct?
Absolutely, yeah, as we would for the students in the upper ranges as well.
Got it. And I'm focusing on the lower ranges, just because I'm
Yes, of course.
That's where I've chosen to focus. All right, thank you.
Great. Yeah, John.
Katie, thank you for the report. I have a question about statistical methods, not my strong suit, so I'm hoping you can help me. In the report, you note where there are students who are just shy of the expected growth range, but they're within the standard error for measurement, right?
Right.
Are you also noting students who just barely get into the expected growth range but are also on the upside within the standard error of measurement?
Right, I haven't taken all of those numbers, but we definitely would look at that, yes.
Yeah. Rachel, or a follow-up?
I understand there's a lot of different reasons we collect data, and I'm going to focus on, I think, the point of this one, which is to look at students and determine how students are improving, not to look at, you know, teachers, or curriculum, or anything else like that. Given that, I'm having a hard time understanding the 25 to 75% range as being a success. I would, I would postulate that 50%, you know, that's, that would be, you know, or a median or an average improvement for a student would be the target. And then, some statistical error range, which we have here, 55 points, on either side of that would be, you know, because of the given day of the test and all that type of stuff. That actually is a smaller range than the 25 to 75% that you have here. So I'm, I'm just, you know, as a, you know, as a parent, you know, finding out that my child had the 20, was at the 25 percentile of growth and saying that that was good or acceptable or typical seems pretty lax.
As far as the, so basically, it's defining the interquartile, so, you know, when you've got the 25% of the students who are below to identify, but then the range, I think this was established when Phil was first brought on to kind of provide that range of a lower threshold and a higher threshold. But in kind of the stats world, if you will, that is the measure that they see as being within a middle ground, and that's why the data was interpreted that way.
You're referring to a normal distribution?
Yes, thank you.
Yes. So, that already takes into account the error range that you mentioned, so I think it's double counting to take it into account again. So
Oh, I see.
If you're, if you're outside that 25% to 75% range
Right.
You've already gone outside of the error range from expected or median or whatever the correct statistical term is.
That, you're absolutely correct.
So I think that's double counting, and I'd actually prefer if it was a mid, you know, midpoint with an error range instead of 25 to 75, but, you know, if that's, if this is a better way to do it, that's, you know, that's a different thing. But I don't think you can add that on top of it again to look at.
Yes, absolutely, absolutely.
And then I had another question somewhat related to that. I'm not positive I'm understanding the percentiles here, but for instance, on page four, where it mentions 30 students fall in the 90% and above percentile. So that would be roughly 10% of the student population?
Could you repeat the number again? I don't have I don't have my report.
Yeah, no, not the 30 part, but it says falls in the 90 and above percentile. The 90 and above percentile represents 10% of the population.
So, so the achievement score, using the scale score, when you say you're in the 90th percentile, that means that score did better than 90% of your students, or above 90% of your students. So the whole population. So it's, it's saying that they did better than 90% of the entire student population.
Okay. So the 30 students that, that fell into the, did not meet the proficiency level increase, what's that 30 number out of? Is it out of 50 students, or 40, or?
Yeah, I believe, gosh, I wish I had my numbers in front of me. What I did was I took the number of students, so 122 if you're looking at sixth grade. So 122 students did not show growth, and then I broke that down into-
No, I'm asking that, you have that in here.
Okay.
I'm asking a different question. So if, how many students fall in the 90 and above percentile? 10%? Or a bigger number than that, or why?
You mean of the total, of the 433?
Yes, of the total, of the total of 433.
Right.
It's, it would be 10% fall in the 90 percentile and above, or?
Not necessarily.
Okay.
I don't have that number with me, but I can find out for you.
Okay.
But not necessarily, because we're looking at, because there could be repetition of scores, and so it doesn't mean 10% of students. It could mean more or less.
So then, so then I'll just use this as an example.
Sure.
But it's, there's 30% fall in that category, and if it was 10%, that would be 43 or so students. And that would mean over 70% of the students in that top category failed to meet expectations.
Oh.
And, and if you look on the reading, the, the numbers, again, we don't know what the number is, so I don't know, but to start with 10% is just kind of a, you know, a guess. 10% of 361 would be about 36, and 30 out of 36 students failed to grow by 25% on the test. So that, I would think that that would be the reason why we're doing this, but that should be a number that pops out as being important and way beyond statistically significant.
Sure. You make very good points, and I would ask if I can come back to you-
Oh, yes.
-on this statistic, because I don't know, I, I did not break it down into every student who was above the 90th percentile and 90th, but I'd like to speak from a place of knowledge there and answer your question. And so I will definitely respond, and so that you get that, that information. But I understand your question, and I, and I will follow up.
All right, thank you.
Okay.
Any other questions?
I have a couple.
Oh, go ahead.
Kimberly.
I'm sorry. I just wanted to clarify one thing also. On Appendix A, which is grade six math gains, that, that dataset is seven years of students, everybody, right?
Correct.
Okay, and that's seven years of students who did not make the expected gains, or just all students?
Oh, so what Phil did was take seven years of data in order to find, basically, per 50-point scales, what growth was made by students for the past seven years in that same range.
At each row.
Exactly. And, and they vary slightly, because the students vary.
Okay, so Appendix A is, are all students from the sixth grade in District 39 for the last seven years? That's what that represents?
The, the gains ranges.
The gains ranges.
Yes.
And so at, yeah, so if you're, for students who were at the floor of 2875, 100, there were 175 of them, and the ceiling was 2924, and there, that was the expected range for students who were at, who started out at 2925, scaled score. I'm just-
Yes.
Okay. And then Exhibit B is just 2015, 16?
Right.
Correct. Okay. Thank you.
Great. Tracy.
Thank you. I just have, general, what did, I missed, what is renorming? What did you mean when you were giving the report?
Oh, that's taking, sure, that's taking the data, like we did this past seven years, and calculating, doing the same thing, but we would drop the first two years of it and go back five. So we do this cycle to make sure that our data is up to date.
Okay. When you said, were you going to say something?
Oh, no.
When you said, we were, we wanted to look at something beyond our district, and we had trouble finding other people to compare it to?
Yes.
What did you mean that there was a limited demographic for, so we couldn't find comparables?
So basically, in order to find, and I think this was Melanie and Kathy's report in, I can't remember which month, but they were trying to ask the performance series rep and the data consultant there, is there any way that we can find comparisons for students like ours in our community? And there's information, personal information, that we couldn't get, because it's usually not reported to help with the privacy of, of students. And so that's why that avenue of trying to find expected gains and those ranges between the 25th and the 75th fell short. And so instead of just dropping it all together, we thought, we have data, we might as well look and see what our students have done in the past seven years.
So just to be clear, meaning it was difficult to find, I don't know, socio-economic?
Yeah.
Or who girls were, who boys are, how they did, all that stuff?
Right.
Does it really, does it really matter?
So when we, when we talk about comparisons.
Melanie, does it really matter, like, that we have to find something exactly comparable to us?
Well, when we're trying to develop these norms, it, it does matter. And so we were hoping to get more information from the Performance Series national pool, but that information is not available to us. So that's why we're, we're-
We're dealing with this, this mathematical phenomenon called regression towards the mean. When you have outliers-
Right.
Then there's this pressure to go in. So when you look at the Performance Series or MAP testing, and whenever they do the growth projections, there's always negative projections.
Well, there's always going to be a bell curve.
Right, right.
I mean, the curve just shifts up the line.
We were trying to find a different way around that, by look, if we can find some peers that are similar to us, and they, we can look at their growth gains and compare them to, they'll say the average is, I don't know, minus five, and we can say, oh, our minus five looks just like their minus five.
So if, would it be acceptable to find peers, I don't know, I'm just picking a Nutria feeder like Winnetka if they did it? But we could use that, but we wouldn't have to break it down to, like, girl, boy?
So the problem is, not everybody gives Performance Series.
Right.
And tests are different, so we can't compare Performance Series, for example, to a district in the township that's doing MAP testing or STAR testing, or-
Does nobody else do Performance in our, okay.
No, not in our standard districts.
Well, and also, even if they do do Performance Series, once you identify someone, they have to be willing to let you see their data.
That's exactly what happened with Performance Series. They, they could not deliver what they hoped they could, because they couldn't get cooperation.
I was just looking for a way to take the data, if there was, and not worry about how many boys or girls, or whatever, because I don't think it matters.
At this point, right here tonight, we're not talking about gender differences. We're looking-
I just heard demographics, that's what I-
Oh, no, that meant socioeconomic-
Okay.
...achievement in general. But we're continuing to need to look at and struggle with this growth model, because we really want to do a good job with it, and you've asked some good questions, and we're not, clearly not finished.
And then my final question, this whole, this is obviously all off Performance Series, which is, this is all academic-measured growth.
Right. And, and that's why I tried to emphasize in the report that it's an entry point for discussions, and there are many other factors that we would bring into play. Absolutely.
Perfect.
Right, so it becomes a screening tool. So if we have 100 kids that aren't making their gains, we can very quickly have a small meeting at school and say, oh, you know, there's really not a problem here, or there is. But we need to be able to screen kids in some way, so we can narrow down, just like with our RTI model for the bottom 25%.
Again, the reason I'm asking is if, we talked about anxiety and school refusal and stuff, it's not a measure in here of half those kids-
Correct.
-are coming back to school, and they're happy to be in school.
Right.
I see that as growth.
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
Frank?
Yeah, I just had a quick follow-up. I, I think the, the seven-year approach is a good idea. I mean, it gets you a starting data point that, that normalizes a little bit the year-to-year variance of students or, or tests, or whatever. The only thing that I caution on that is, since we're, we're kind of validating that the kids grow an average amount, and then we're feeding that back into, you know, the average of seeing what the new average could be, it, it doesn't set the bar a little higher every year.
Right. That's exactly why we were looking for peers outside. You're, it's a circular cover there, but you're exactly right.
Just want, and then just to clarify, right, this is the first time that we're now going to start looking at growth in addition to what we've seen over the last number of years, which has simply been the absolute scores. And now you're going to be matrixing on top of that-
Absolutely.
-growth when you report it in the future, and there's going to be different interventions now for growth and perform, and performance and growth at different cohort levels.
Right, it's an additional piece of that information-
Right.
-that makes it a lot more complete toward thinking about student and growth.
So the next year's report on prior year's Performance Series will have a more substantive kind of cross-section of students discussed? Okay.
Right. But I just want to circle back to Kimberly's original question. We're casting the net wide, 25%. That's intentional, so we can make sure that we don't miss anybody. We do the same thing at the RTI for the, the lower 25%. It's the same approach.
Well, we need to always pay attention to that middle as well.
Right. And the middle, but you see, the middle's captured in here. The greens are the middle, so.
Right, right. Just one last question, because I'm really focused on the datasets that are reflected in the appendices. So in Appendix A, I understand that 20, 2415 school year is not included, because we did not do the spring testing.
Exactly.
But 2015, 16 is included in this dataset, or no?
No, no, that's, we're using all of it.
Everything before that.
But before that.
Okay, all right. And so we, going forward, we just hopscotch over that year when we're doing this dataset, right?
Correct.
Yeah, okay, thanks.
Okay, are there any other questions? Yeah, great questions. Thank you very much, Katie.
Thank you.
Okay, annual business. We have the Illinois prevailing wages.
Yes, the Illinois Department of Labor establishes the rates of, the prevailing rate of wages. Each public body is required to adopt publicly post and attach to all construction contract specifications a copy of the prevailing wages. This is done annually, and Nutria High School coordinates this process with the entire township by publishing the information in a local newspaper, sending it to the Department of Labor and the Secretary of State. Anything to add, Gail?
I just have a clarification question. Prevailing wage is mandated by the state, exactly? Correct?
That is correct.
Thank you. So that's, that is the wage that we need to adopt by law?
Correct.
Thank you.
Okay, great. The next is resolution authorizing our July bill payments.
Yes, as we announced earlier, we're not having a board meeting in July, because we finished our work tonight, but the board will still be obligated to make bill payments during the month of July. So we're asking that you approve tonight our ability to enable the treasurer, Gail Buscemi, to fulfill our financial obligations, beginning June 27th, tomorrow, or today, and then the August 29th board meeting. Anything to add?
Any questions from board members? Okay, good. Let's move on to the board policy review. The first is our second and final reading of policies we looked at last month, I think.
Yeah, I'm going to roll third and final into that same thing-
Sure.
-because my comments are identical, and that is that we took the board feedback last month, we made improvements to the policies that you have before you, received a final attorney review as well. And is there anything to add to that, Dr. Galwacki?
No.
Okay, do any board members have any comments or questions? Cindy?
I just have a clarifying question. It's in Policy 7:10, the sex equity paragraph, where it indicates no student shall, based on sex, sexual orientation, or gender identity, be denied equal access, et cetera, et cetera. And I just want to clarify that, on the gender identity point, that means the gender that a student identifies as is the program set that they will not be denied access to. So somebody, that's my-
That's correct.
-clarifying question, okay. And then I just had a question about how we address that process as a student goes through any gender, any transgender issues.
Yeah, it's kind of, it's actually quite interesting, and also, it's, it's moving, because we have students as young as five who are, you know, identifying as a gender that's different from their birth. And it's pretty much in District 39, completely led by the parents. They go through a process, and we make referrals to Children's Lurie Hospital, and they go through a lengthy, personal, private process, until they come to a place where the parents agree that the gender needs to be, the gender identity, the gender identity is different than what they were born with. And then they come to the school district, and then we establish a process by which we review the information and set up a plan for transition. It's a very lengthy process, and it requires a lot of review and reflection, and once that process is complete, then we're ready to do a transition.
Any other comments from board members? Okay, great. This is the second opportunity for audience members to address the board. Is anyone in the audience, would they like to address the board? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on with our agenda. To the action items, or to the consent agenda. Are there any items that the board would like pulled from the consent agenda? Okay, seeing none. Ms. Levine, will you please proceed with the motion to approve the consent agenda?
Move that we approve the personnel report dated June 27th, 2016. Move that we adopt the attached resolution authorizing the adoption of the prevailing, prevailing rate of wages for the state of Illinois effective June 27th, 2016. Move that we adopt the attached resolution authorizing payment for goods and services between now and the next board meeting scheduled for August 2016. Move that we approve the administrators' 2016-2017 contractual salary with aggregate increases at 1.6%. Move that we approve Beth Alpert and Andy Schaefer to serve as members-at-large on the Community Review Committee. Move that we approve the amendments of the bylaws of the Community Review Committee by replacing the language in the purpose statement in its entirety with the language that is listed in the document? Or do I need to read it? Move that we approve the attached resolution to permit legal counsel to intervene in a residential number 1606-01 property tax assessment appeal for a property located at 15 Linden Avenue, Willmett, pin number 05-35-201-007-0000 for tax year 2015. Move that we approve a second and final read revised Board of Education policies 2:20, powers and duties of the Board of Education, 2:260, uniform grievance procedures, 2:300, employment of members of the Board of Education and their relatives, 2:500, service awards and memorial, and revise students' policy 7:10, equal educational opportunities. And a move that we approve a second and final read deletion of policies 2:310, employment of former BOE, Board of Education members, and 2:500, service awards and memorial. Move that we approve as third and final read proposed new Board of Education policy 2:250, access to district public records. Move that we approve the accounts payable for bills listed between May 24th, 2016, and June 27th, 2016, in the following amounts. Educational fund of $570,850.88. O&amp;M fund, $297,345.03. Debt service, $121,228.52. Transportation fund, $217,462.31. Capital projects, $237,091.79. For a total, all funds, $1,443,978.53. Move that we approve the manual checks issued between May 24th, 2016, and June 27th, 2016, in the following amounts. Educational fund, $429,097.62. O&amp;M fund, $31,498.10. Transportation fund, $1,534.12. Tort fund, $1,347.50. For a total, all funds, $463,477.34.
Second.
Whoa, that was fast. Okay, so the motion's been moved and seconded. Would the clerk please call the roll? Kimberly, all catch up? Yes. John flagging?
Yes.
Tracy carrying?
Here, yes.
Yes.
Cindy Levine?
Yes.
Yes. Okay, so the yeses have it, the motion is carried. Now we're on to- Now we're on to conference items. Is there any old business? New business? Any good in welfare? My only good in welfare is to thank you, Melanie, for your dedication and your creativity and your leadership in District 39. I remember long ago when you first came in as the principal at Central School when my children, my four children, were really young at Central. And you really have made a mark on this district, and I want to thank you and tell you that we will really miss you. Enjoy your retirement. Okay, so may I have a motion to adjourn to executive session to discuss student discipline, pending litigation, collective bargaining, and specific personnel?
So moved.
May I have a second?
Second.
Motion carried? Oh, no. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Yes.
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 Yes. Yes, okay, motion carried. We are now adjourned to executive session. It is 8:35, I think, or is that right? 8:10, excuse me, there's a reflection on there, I can never see it. Okay, 8:10. Thank you for attending. No, I just, I, actually, I can't see the other hand on the clock. Okay, thank you, Cindy.